If you would please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I don't need another fart tonight. Oh my god.
You cannot believe this.
So it is so nice to see people in the house. This is great. Mrs. Superintendent, shall we do the MEF Awards presentation first?
Yes, please.
Okay. So my MEF friends, would you like to come tell us why you're here? Good, they're coming. Hi, everybody. So we finally had our grant review meeting and we gave out over $10,000 in grants. The money's already there so the teachers can go ahead and get their money and order their materials, but these are the formal presentations. Ms., could you introduce yourself? Some people might not know who you are. So I'm Valerie Cowan. I'm the president of MEF. This is Ayako Barnum, our clerk, our secretary, and Mike Brossey, our treasurer. And we've all been with MEF for quite a while, so with Michelle. Thank you. So we're giving out two grants to Whitcomb teachers. So the first one is to Mark Rodequins. Mark, how do you say your last name?
Rodequins.
Rodequins. So we're actually, we're giving Mark $2,400 for hands-on electronic kits. And he's purchasing SnapCircuit Pro Kits and MakeBot 3D printer for the advanced technology classes at Whitcomb. The combination of these tools will allow for introduction to circuits, expand on current lessons in communications, and eighth grade advanced electronics technologies. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you very much.
And then the second award is being given to Jeff Gay and Joanne Mahoney. They are not here. I did get a... I'll drop this off at Whitcomb tomorrow. So we're giving them $2,121 for the purchase of various robotics club equipment that they need. The robotics club has excelled in the amount of time it's been in existence, and they've made it to regionals and they're hoping to be able to make it to the world competition in Texas. And so these parts, this will give them a lot of parts to help with the robotics program. And then for the Good Now School, Kelly Hall...
And Allison Hathaway.
And Allison are receiving $895 for hands-on STEAM vocabulary kits for the third, fourth, and fifth grades at Good Now. The kits include pieces that allow the children to explore geometry, engineering, and graphics with physical pieces that enhance their learning in these areas and integrate the vocabulary from these areas into other areas of the curriculum. So actually, that supports all four elementary schools, right?
Yes, one, the other.
Not just Good Now.
There'll be materials going equally to all schools today.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
It's good to see you. You're welcome. And then Gina Kittredge and Kelsey Ben Savango of the Early Childhood Education Center are receiving $505 for inclusive doll accessories for all the preschools. These accessories enhance the doll play curriculum already in place that benefits communication using imagination, developing empathy, and social emotional skills, fosters independence, and helps the kids learn how to be inclusive of all people. So we love it. Susan Rosenthal at the Kane Elementary School is receiving $1,650 for 10 software licenses that allow emerging readers to begin reading easy text while they listen to a story to see the words as they are highlighted for them. This is called a clicker application software. And these software apps allow the students with their writing as using keys for words progresses to using keys as their letters, as their skills increase. And this is both for ELA learners and special ed kids. This will help a lot of the children, so. And then we have, oh, we have another grant for Kane to Erica Ledger, Annalise McGrail, Heather Sargent, and Kathleen Cormier. And the second grade teachers at Kane are receiving $1,493 for student chair pockets. The students will be keeping, the second graders will be keeping their reading materials in these pockets, which helps them be really organized and it cuts down on preparation time when the kids get ready to read. So we're really happy to help you guys with this.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
And last but not least is to Suzanne Vent Catateram, the media center teacher at Marlborough High School, and I've spoken with her and she lives in Rhode Island and she couldn't get back. But we're awarding her $1,500 to build a collection of Portuguese and Spanish books for the center. English language students need independent reading books in their native languages so that they can continue to grow in their native language as well as English. So those are the seven grants we're giving out this year. I'll drop this off to Suzanne at the high school tomorrow. And thank you again for supporting MEF and helping us continue to support the teachers. So good luck with all your projects, you guys. We look forward to getting your reports at how the projects went. Thank you. Thank you. So if you want to, you can leave. You don't have to stay. We'll take a two-minute recess while folks leave. For my first item, National Merit Scholarship finalist. Dr. Riley will provide the committee an update regarding a Marlborough High School 2023 National Merit Scholarship finalist.
Thank you, everybody. I want to invite Alexander to come up here and join me. Alexander Banos is being recognized tonight. Congratulations. Absolutely. So we're here to recognize Alex and his achievement as a finalist and standing for the National Merit Scholarship Program. Congratulations, Alex. Make us all proud. This is for you. Do you want to say anything?
Say anything?
Go ahead, jump in there. Come on.
All right, all right. Gosh, I've never had to say anything.
I surprised them.
Yeah. Wow. I guess thank you to my parents for the encouragement and a little bit of pressure. And I'm gonna keep trying my best to make you guys proud.
Can I just say that when we announced Alex as a recipient of the Worcester Roundtable Award and him attending the luncheon, the school committee said, "We'd love for Alex to be here because we talk about you all the time." So it is so great to have you here. So thank you for coming. Yeah, thanks. I included in the packet my superintendent entry findings. Over the last eight months, I have focused on continuing to meet the district goals established by Superintendent Bergeron in FY '20 and the updated FY '22 strategies for improvement. I believe it is important for the staff, students, and families to know that a new superintendent does not mean we stop moving forward as a district. I've organized my findings into four sections. The FY '20 goals that have been met or have made significant progress. FY '20 goals that need continued or renewed focus. FY '23 highlights, which included some positive feedback from multiple stakeholders. FY '23 new areas of focus and improvements. I look forward to working with the Marlborough leadership team, teacher leaders, and school committee members to identify priority goals and actions for our district improvement plan. And as we all, I think that you all know, we started that work on a district level looking at transitioning and identifying some district improvement plans for our short-term immediate actions that we will move forward as we talked about at that dinner meeting, that our strategies for improvement will continue to drive our long-term goals and our budget priorities in the future as well. I included the draft calendar for 2023-24 in the packet for your review. I will place the calendar on the agenda for action for the next school committee meeting. You will notice that the FY '24 calendar includes a March professional development day, which is a little unusual. We have moved the January professional development day to March due to the presidential primary election. At that time, I look forward to your comments and suggestions before the next meeting. I have an update on the Whitcomb School leadership. Principal House has notified the district that she is extending her leave through the end of the year. Although Mr. Turkhardt will continue to assist when available, Ms. Dolan has appointed Ms. Heather Roach as interim assistant principal for the remainder of the school year. She's going to be also sending out an updated notice to all the families tomorrow morning. Substitute rate update is also, we have an action-packed discussion tonight. Tonight, I'm asking the committee to approve substitute rate changes to make Marlborough Public Schools more competitive in the market. Thank you, Patty Brown, for researching and compiling this request to present for you tonight. Ms. Brown is also here to answer any questions on anything I don't know that it's an action item for later on, so at that point. And then finally, I added the, actually put for the Director of Finance in Operations Should I start with the bio or do you want... All right. So tonight, I am moving forward the recommendation to the school committee that Mr. Thomas LaFleur be appointed as the Director of Finance and Operations. Mr. LaFleur is currently the Director of Finance and Operations at Wayland Public Schools. He previously worked as a school business administrator in the Drakehead Public Schools, an interim business manager in the Peabody Public Schools, and a chief financial officer in the Gloucester Public Schools. Prior to these positions, he worked with schools in Massachusetts as a project manager at Tyler Technologies, owned his own business in software implementation project management, and held various positions in technology and customer service, largely in business office technologies. Mr. LaFleur is licensed as a school business administrator in Massachusetts and is a licensed CPA and project management professional. He's enrolled in a business administrative doctoral program at the William Howard Taft University, completed a master's in taxation from Taft University, and a BA in accounting from Southern New Hampshire University. He is also a United States veteran. So I'm handing it over.
So we met an executive session earlier and we voted as a school committee based on the superintendent's recommendation. And we're gonna vote publicly as well, so that it's for the record. Excuse me, I'm gonna make a motion that we accept the recommendation and hire Mr. Tom LaFleur as our new finance and operations director. Second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor? Terrific. Thank you.
Welcome. Do you want to say anything? You don't have to, but if you'd like to...
Alex on there.
The floor is yours. Great, if Alex did, you got this.
I want to thank you for the opportunity. I'm really looking forward to this. It's been eight years bouncing around a little bit because of circumstances as they played out, but this feels really good. It feels like a new home. So again, thank you for the opportunity. I appreciate it.
Welcome.
Thank you.
He will tell you every day that we're thrilled. But still sad.
Yeah.
He was starting to sweat. That was my last item, unless anyone has any questions.
Questions for the superintendent? Seeing none. Mr. Scazza, Dr. Scazza, sorry.
Thank you, madam. Chair, I just have a few things to update the committee on tonight. The first is with regard to our committees that we have as a district. I chair three of them, the Joint Evaluation, Abar, and PD committees. These three committees have met recently to discuss the next steps in these respective areas, and each committee will make recommendations to Superintendent Murphy and other stakeholders for continued work and focus for the remainder of the 2022-2023 school year. That will be a spring board for the work next fall. We are fortunate to have many members of our school committee participating on these committees. We just met today for Abar and we had some very relevant participation from Mrs. Bowden Hedinger. We had our PD meeting recently and Mr. Caruso was a key contributor in joint evaluation with Mrs. Matthews as a key contributor on that committee, so I appreciate your participation and involvement. After-school intervention update, so I'm very excited about this one. After-school intervention at our four elementaries has begun in grades three, four, and five. Took a little while to get this up off the ground. We were waiting for transportation, but Mr. Diaz and Mr. Phalen made that happen for us. So we have late bus services for the students at each elementary school for the first time in a long time. These elementary late buses help us avoid students not being able to attend based on lack of transportation availability. We anticipate that the intervention program will grow larger as the school year progresses, and we continue to offer after-school intervention in ELA and mathematics at the Whitcomb Middle School and Marlborough High, and that did start at the beginning of the school year. So we have after-school intervention going at all of our schools with the exception of the Early Childhood Center. I did just get a straw poll from the elementary principals prior to the meeting of the student involvement at these after-school intervention offerings. And at Jarwick School, there are 60 students participating. At Good Now, 60. At Kane, 50 students. And at Richer School, 66, with a total of 30 teachers working at the, in the programs at large. Finally, district-wide Title I nights. We have one of two Title I nights coming up. So one goal of Title I services is to increase parent involvement. And tomorrow, Wednesday, March 29th, and Wednesday, April 12th, at 6:30 PM at the Whitcomb Middle School, we will be hosting presentations for parents and guardians entitled "Social and Emotional Learning: Connecting School and Home Strategies." It's actually gonna be a six o'clock start. There was a little back and forth, but six o'clock is the advertisement. During these presentations, we will be discussing what SEL looks like with regard to various situations in the home, including effective praise and feedback, the power of our words in shaping behaviors, restorative justice, collaborative problem-solving, growth mindset, and the impact of social media. There will be free childcare available at these events, and interpretation services will be made available at the April 12th event. We have put out and publicized through our app, the principals at the elementary in Whitcomb School put out a reminder through Blackboard Messenger that just went out right before school committee starting. So any parents that are watching tonight, please do attend, and we hope to see you tomorrow night and/or April 12th. Happy to answer any questions about any of my agenda items.
Questions for Dr. Scazza. Mrs. Matthews.
Dr. Scazza, those numbers are really great at the elementaries for the after-school. Were these done again based on recommendations from teachers and then could parents opt in if they had a concern?
I would like to grow this program. We wanted to start small and build. So I think that parents having the option to opt in for a number of different reasons, maybe there is a criteria that has been met where students are exiting the program, or we are just extending the criteria a little bit to offer more seats to students. I think that's definitely a possibility. We've been, the late bus routes have been running well as far as I've heard. I haven't heard any criticisms about the routes themselves or the amount of stops, so I think that we can make that happen on the transportation end as well. So we have teachers who stepped up to teach. I think they were preferring to teach in person, and we made that happen. And now with the transportation, I think that we can grow this program, these programs even a little larger.
Terrific. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Ms. O'Brien.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Tonight, I'd like to update the committee on the McKinney-Vento enrollment they had reported on earlier in November. So at that time, on November 8th, I had reported that Marlborough Public Schools had had 47 students that were enrolled as being homeless. Currently, there are 81 homeless students enrolled in the district, which is an increase of 34 students. The state had notified the district in December that they were funding 10 rooms at the extended stay in Marlborough for McKinney-Vento families. And there is a homeless emergency support grant that the department has had that the district has received for students that are enrolled in the district as McKinney-Vento that are staying there. So the district will receive $1,000 for each of these students to support their needs. And the wraparound service providers will be working with the families to assess their individual needs. There's currently 15 students enrolled who are at the extended stay. And I believe on tonight's school committee packet, there is the approval for that grant. We can amend that grant as additional students do, if there are additional students that are staying there, do enroll. Currently, there are two additional students that are in process with registration to enroll, so we will be up to 17 in a couple of days. So I had given you a breakdown of the students who are enrolled from, specifically from the extended stay. So we have two that are at our Early Childhood Center, eight at Richer, one at Whitcomb, and four at Marlborough High School. I haven't heard any concerns as far as the additional unexpected enrollments from those schools. And then overall, I also did a breakdown of school enrollment of all of the McKinney-Vento to date, and also a breakdown of their dwelling arrangement as far as whether or not they are unsheltered, which means that they are just bouncing around and do not have any shelter at all, which is the most unfortunate circumstance. Shelters, we do have some shelters here in Marlborough. Some are at hotel motels. Again, most of that is at extended stay that the state has funded. And then many of our students are doubled up with other family members or friends, and that's the most common situation that we have. The district had also received in FY '22, $36,099 from the American Rescue Plan, homeless children and youth grant. And with some of those funds had carried over to this year for FY '23, there was a one-year rollover for anything that was not used. And these funds have been used for personal care items, school supplies, clothing, groceries, transportation, and any other needs that are identified, and the wraparound service providers are the ones that are primarily managing the use of those grant funds. Any questions?
Ms. Hosey.
Thank you. Just more of a comment. I know we had had a larger amount of homeless that had been here a number of years ago where they were in the Best Western, right? I guess my only comment is that if you're finding that there is more of a need than the grant's able to fulfill, if you can bring that forward so that we can have a discussion to see if there's any way that we can try and support those families, I'd appreciate the heads up.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Matthews.
Question, obviously, it's not just happening here in Marlborough because it's made the news and there are a lot of talk going on right now. Do we know where these kids are coming from? I mean, are they all Boston area or are they...
So it's a mix. So I do not have the specific details on the students that we have. I can't get that information. When Sarah Slatterback from the Department of Ed had contacted us in December, I had asked that. They said it can be a mix of newly, new arrivals to the country as well as those who might have lost their housing due to evictions and things like that within Massachusetts. There's, I know at least some of the students that are at the extended day are new to the country. So we're trying to get records and, or trying to find out what their educational needs are.
Yeah, I mean, the hardest thing is that these are people that, if they're new to the country and don't have a car and they're here in Marlborough, how do they find a job? How do they, you know...
So I guess, so the state has been trying to establish locations for homeless families to be able to have a more permanent place to live. So it's a little bit disconnected, though. When I had asked, I said, "Is there a contact person so I can find out who these families are?" And they're like, "No, they'll just show up at registration." So I said, "Well, how do I know if we have captured, you know, have gotten, you know, all of the families that might have children that need to enroll?" So there's a little bit of a disconnect there as far as who, you know, not having someone that to contact as far as who is making those decisions and placement, but also there's no coordinated effort as far as which districts that they are placing them with. For instance, there are some districts that Mary Murphy was saying that they might have a higher concentration of families from Haiti and would, you know, speak Creole. So they would have more support in that district for families that speak that language, where we have a lot of supports for Spanish and Portuguese. And then students would have a peer group, so, you know, we could get some students that...
Yeah, the news, I don't know if anybody else saw the local news, but, excuse me, they were talking about exactly that, that it's, there's been no consideration of where, what the background is of the child and the family in, it's just throw a dart at a board and hope that they stick.
Correct. So, yeah. But we'll do our best and we're, yeah, so we're here to meet all, you know, the needs of all the kids that are enrolling, so.
Yeah, as Catherine said, I mean, if there's obviously anything further that we can do for these families.
Yeah, I think the thing that's hitting me immediately is we have, you know, a vacation time, you know, that's coming up. And I remember the last time we, there was a huge push at Richer to get additional snacks and things that people donated to try and support those families. So it's just, you know, I think the sooner we can get ahead of it to try and see what we can do to help, because to Heidi's point, if they don't have transportation, they can't get to the food pantry, you know?
So Kayla Flurry-Dawson has been awesome as far as being able to be very resourceful. She has been able to work with Market Basket on using the grant funds to get gift cards specifically for Market Basket and, you know, to be able to get groceries. Also, we're able to purchase Uber, Uber cards so that they are able to have transportation, whether or not it's to the grocery store or to the... whether or not it's to the grocery store or to a medical appointment. So, she has been very, very creative in being able to use those grant funds in non-traditional ways.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other que, are you all set, Jerry?
Yes.
Any other questions? No? Okay. Mr. Diaz.
Thank you, Mayor and Vice Chair. This is tonight's update from Finance and Operations. FY '24 Budget Schedule Update. This evening, we're hosting the public hearing for the FY '24 budget proposed by Superintendent Murphy and her team. After the public hearing, we will be asking the school committee to formally vote and adopt the budget as your own, as FY '24 School Committee Budget. If the school committee votes to adopt the budget, the budget proposal will then go to the mayor and city council this coming Monday, April 3rd, for further deliberation at City Hall. Procurement update. As the budget cycle is winding down, I wanted to update the committee on some forthcoming procurement. As you know, the school department's Office of Finance and Operations facilitates all school-based procurement with the support of City Hall's Chief Procurement Officer. Our two largest procurements are for food services, for a food service management company and for a transportation services provider. Transportation, for the past five budget cycles, we've been talking about how in FY ' '26, we're going to have to go out to bid again and we are likely to go back to a market rate. We've been able to avoid that due to good fortune over the past few budget cycles, but that is coming up. We don't have, it would be too soon to procure that now. We have all of FY '24 and then at the beginning of FY '25, we will have to go out to bid so that we have the proper numbers to develop the FY '26 budget. So, that's just a look for, for the next couple of years. Food service procurement, however, that valid is, that contract is only valid through the end of FY '24, which is the upcoming fiscal year. And it is a large procurement. It is a large service of high impact for us. And given that we have a new Director of Finance coming on board, what I'm proposing to do is this spring, go out to bid. It's a little bit soon, but it's not too soon to be able to do that. And it will be one less thing that we have to do next fiscal year and we can secure a partner for the next five years of food service management company. In order for me to do that, I would love to establish a five-member team to evaluate the proposal of any potential bidders. And I would love to have at least one school committee member as part of that five-member committee.
I'll do it.
I don't mind you.
I don't mind you.
So, we have three potential volunteers, which is great. I appreciate that. What I can do then is offline, reach out and see, it's likely going to be beginning of May where we have to sit and deliberate. So, I'll reach out and then we can finalize the team. So, I appreciate you volunteering. And that's actually all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz.
Thank you.
Acceptance of minutes.
Motion to approve the February 28th minutes.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, opposed, carries. What's that? Okay, so, public particip, are we doing both public participation? Well, is there anyone here would like to speak in public participation, not on the budget? Nope? Okay. Then should we do the public hearing for the budget? Do, do we do it like the city does it? Okay, so, speaking in favor, anyone speaking in favor of the proposed 2024 budget? Seeing none. Anyone speaking against the FY '24 budget? Seeing none. Questions from the committee? Any questions? What's the fourth one? What's the fourth one? Oh, I'm a terrible chair. I only had 10 minutes to prepare. Is there anyone who would like to speak about the budget? Seeing none. Okay, then I will call the budget hearing to a close. And public participation to close. Moving right along, action items. MHS Business Professionals of America. Mrs. Haley, oh.
I asked as well if we can do a quick picture with Alex Bonos before.
Of course.
I forgot to do it when I was up here earlier.
Of course.
My apologies, but it is a big deal. It's top 15,000 students in the country and I want to make sure we get a nice photo op.
And we missed his photo op when he won the last award.
Yeah, when he was a semi, name of semifinalist and received the MASs as well, so.
Or the time before that.
Times, but I apologize for interrupting. I should have asked at the end of the last recognition for him.
That's fine.
I neglected to.
You'll have to take it up with Ms. Haley. She's up and ready to go.
So, you guys, with you all?
Oh, with us? Are you sure?
Yes.
Okay, come on down. Are we going in front?
In front or are we doing back? What are you going to?
Behind, yeah, okay.
Uh, no, we can do them front.
I'll hobble out.
This will be the big one for the Facebook page.
Facebook page.
Thank you, sorry to interrupt like that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Haley.
Come on down.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm here to ask permission to take students to the National Leadership Conference in Anaheim, California, April 26th through April 30th. We had seven students participate in the state leadership conference and we had 18 awards, so it's really great, very successful. We're going to build our club bigger next year.
Cole gave it a hit. I think to make a motion to approve the trip for BPA.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Ms. Hennessy.
I just wanted to say, congratulations. You guys did awesome. It was really great to see how many awards and acknowledgements you guys got in so many different areas. So, kudos.
Thank you very much.
The little small group that could.
Exactly.
Yeah. So, and I just want to point out that seven students actually qualified to go to Anaheim.
Yes, that's correct.
But unfortunately, only three are able to.
Yes.
Make the trip. Too bad. But, yay team. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, opposed? You're going to California.
Yay.
Bring back the gold.
Hopefully, yes.
Ah, new MHS scholarship, Dr. Riley. Is this you? This is very nice, this one.
Yes, well, I'm going to welcome Mr. James Horanis to the podium to say a few words about this amazing scholarship that he's bringing online from Marlboro High School. Mr. Horanis, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is this mic on? Oh, wow.
You're on.
All my bosses are here. This is fantastic. So, again, my name is James Horanis. I'm a new ELA teacher at the high school. And about 30 or 40 years ago, a family member from my father's side, they were both educators for the city of Framingham, town of Framingham at that point, began a scholarship for Framingham, basically, for high school students. Now that I am here, my father has actually kind of passed on that trust, if you will, that the money is actually in a trust. And it's the baseline that we can offer every year in perpetu, you know, perpetuity, $15,000. There have been years that we've been able to offer as much as 30. For this first year, we've kind of put it as like one, you know, one scholarship award. But again, the committee, whatever they see best fit, you know, usually by the beginning of the year, my father and I will be able to know, you know, what we can offer. But every year will serve me, you know, that base price as an active ELA instructor, you know, scholarship writing, college essay writing, you can all, room 247, if you want to turn them in my way. I don't know if you have any questions for me about the scholarship. Again, I'm not part of the selection process, but again, it's something that I was very much a part of for Framingham and it's just something very passionate about and very happy to bring it to the high school. I don't know if you have any.
I don't have any questions, but I, I'm gonna defer to my colleagues, but I'm first going to say, welcome to Marlboro.
Thank you so much.
And thank you so much. This is really a lovely thing that your family does for students and it's so nice of you to bring it to Marlboro. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Who's next? Hennessy?
Well, I'm going to just echo. I mean, it's, it's an incredible opportunity that you're, you're providing for someone that wants to take that next step of heading to college. And I just, thank you so much. It's huge. And so, thank you so much for your family on, on doing this and providing an opportunity. So, thanks.
Yes.
And welcome.
Oh, thank you again.
So, I lied. I do have a question.
Sure.
So, do you, does your family, does the trust, are they looking for a particular student that wants to study something specific?
No, so really, we, you know, when, we always, I don't want to say equally weighed, but you know, need and academic achievement, both are sort of the pillars. There's no threshold for GPA. There's no specific major and/or test, but obviously secondary, you know, higher education in some form or fashion is kind of one of the prerequisites. But again, you know, there's, it's really, you know, weighing those two options. So, there's no particulars, if you will, besides a Marlboro High School student. That is, that's in it as well.
Perfect. And, did you want to say something?
I was, no, you guys have all said it. I was going to make a motion to accept it.
Oh, anybody else want to say something before Mrs. Matthews makes a motion to accept it?
Motion to accept with gratitude and thank you and welcome.
Thank you. Can I take this microphone for the class? This works really well.
Really well.
I just got a new standing desk. This works. I like this and this is really good.
I love it.
Oh, Dr. Riley will get you a microphone.
Dr. Riley, would you get this man a microphone?
Appreciate it.
I love it, I love it.
You just need a podium and a mic and you're all set.
We'll find a way for whatever you need.
That is true, yes, we did.
So, motion's been made and seconded to approve this wonderful scholarship with gratitude. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, opposed? We accept your generosity. Thank you so much.
Fantastic. Well, and I may have to get home a little, I've got to work on my teach point and I've got proctoring for MCAS tomorrow, so we've got a big day.
My goodness.
So, we may have to, so if I.
Scoot out.
I appreciate it. It was a pleasure.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's great.
Now, don't sit down here, I'm next.
What's next? Yeah, Program of Studies, finally. No snow tonight.
There's no questions on the Program of Studies. Thank you all very much.
Not so fast.
I do have an addendum that I'm going to pass around. Is that okay?
Please.
I'm just going to hand it out here on the end. Yeah, sorry. We'll start with what's on the edited list that you received and then we can talk a little bit about that addendum. So, looking at the first list that you received, thank you, thank you, on the edits that were submitted prior to the last scheduled meeting that was canceled because of the snowstorm, there really aren't many changes, as you notice, as you go down through each of those sections in the Program of Studies. One thing I want to mention about, well, so getting into number nine, History and Social Sciences, we're adding a new Foundations of United States History II class. That is primarily geared towards our English learners, levels one and two. So, that'll be a new addition to the Program of Studies.
And so, is that a second year, just like in the regular US history, that's two years? This is now going to be two years?
Absolutely. We had sort of like a World History Civics class that we had originally built in. And Ms. Blair and Ms. Medall, you have, have transitioned that curriculum to being more focused in US I and US II now over the last few years.
Just integrated into.
Exactly. Yep, and this is kind of the growth of that program.
Excellent.
Moving into.
Anybody have any?
Oh, sorry.
Anyone have any questions on anything History and Social Studies up? He blew through that. Do anybody want to ask anything? Okay.
Okay, absolutely.
Number 10, Science and Technology.
Absolutely, we can go through each section. That works great. Number 10, so what I want to mention about this is we're, we're changing the courses from full year to semesterized, which is why we included them as sort of like an official removal and then an official addition. So, those courses are actually very reflective of the courses that they're already replacing. We're trying to continue to grow in interest base and we're trying to make sure that our offerings are accessible to all students. And we've been doing that across all of our departments. And so, these semesterized offerings in electricity and electronics and robotics and in woodworking and carpentry are going to give students more of an accessible experience. It's going to be semesterized and allows them to take more too within the department as opposed to scheduling yourself for a full year block in an electronics course or a robotics course. You can now take both electronics and robotics, in theory, within the same year.
So, you know, when we threw, you okay?
Yeah.
I'm just thinking back to when we were discussing kind of like the pathways.
Sure.
That, that students could look at healthcare or education or whatever. And manufacturing was sort of one of them. And I remember back all that fancy equipment that we got under the Y2K or YKK.
YCC, yeah.
YCC grant. Uncle Dan and his bag of money. Do we, are we still offering that kind of thing? And do these new courses move in that direction? Because it looks like you're getting rid of manufacturing and construction and carpentry. So, I'm just wondering.
It's, it's more of a conversion. So, a lot of the equipment is the same. In fact, we're kind of looking at what, what equipment we're going to utilize as the next phase of the programming to sustain it for the long term. But the manufacturing piece is still very much built into each of the courses that you see. And we're really looking at how we can get into less of a trajectory that requires multiple years of knowledge base. An example would be our robotics program, which has gone the gamut for a two-year experience. And the number of students who are enrolling and committing to that multiple-year experience, it really shrinks considerably. We want to continue to offer it. We want to broaden the experience and make it more accessible too, to language learners, to students with disabilities. So, with the new equipment that we're looking to phase in, it'll provide that hands-on opportunity for, for lots of learners. It's more current in terms of the software that it uses, but it might not be as technical as what we were previously trying to get to in the spirit of these semesterized courses. But we still have all that wonderful equipment. We don't use it enough because the trajectory isn't leading enough towards that and that's why we're looking at all of this now.
Excellent. Well, and we, I know Mrs. Hennessy is very happy about semester classes.
Yeah. Actually, yeah, I was going to say that, that does make me really happy. Actually, yeah, I was gonna say, that, that does make me really happy to see more semester courses. I mean, I think that that's one of the big things that we've been pushing now for a while, was trying to provide that opportunity. If somebody really wants to delve more, I mean, I see your robotics and automation is the four-credit full-year course, but, you know, I know for, gosh, I'm gonna talk off the top of my head, like music production, or maybe it's also TV prod, you can take it, even if it's a semester course, they can do a semester course and then do another semester course, and it gets a little bit deeper. Is that something that you think might be similar in some of these other areas? And that, there'll, there's the opportunity for differentiated instruction so that, that child who might just really have a, an interest can, can get something more out of it?
Absolutely, absolutely. We're gonna continue to build out the experiences, the, the foundation is gonna be updated. So, as I said before, the, the new approach with the new foundation, like the equipment that we're looking to put into place, it's gonna be a higher level for software and just the resources in of themselves are more current, and then building upon that is, is very much still the goal. How we do that within the curriculum in order to be responsible with our staffing resources is really what we have to look at as students make their way through the trajectory. So, some ideas that, that we've discussed is the coursework that we provide, we obviously want our courses to be filled, and we want learners across all different levels to be able to access those courses. To get that first experience is what really hooks a student into a trajectory. As you'll see when we talk about the addendum, we, we've had some success now building out partnerships with local companies, and so, maybe looking at how they can help us then support the continued trajectory of a student towards certification, that's really where we've started to broaden our horizons the last four or five years. And, and what it does for us is, it allows us to be focused and responsible with our staffing resources, so that we can try to avoid sections of courses that might have very small numbers because the interest base and the technical skills required to get there can, can decrease over, over the years, so.
Not enough hours in the day.
No, never is.
You're still, you're still on the floor.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. So, before we leave the Science, Technology and Engineering section though.
Sure.
Love to get some perspective and understanding, so when we look back on your ninth and 10th grade listings, and then opportunities in 11th and 12th, but when you're looking at the teaming, there's the intro to physics that's offered currently with ninth grade.
Yep.
I'm trying to understand though, like, we have, we have the intro physics, but then we have the honors physics separately.
Sure.
What's, what's the differential, and why are we not necessarily just offering physics in ninth grade?
Sure.
To fully complete, I guess.
That's a great question.
You know.
So, the, the MCAS alignment for a ninth grade physics is a little bit different than what we all might typically remember from maybe our junior or senior year of high school, if, if you took physics in high school. The, the curriculum for the, the standard physics course follows alongside the math curriculum up through Algebra II. So, you actually need to have a little bit more of a working knowledge of, of mathematics through junior year in order to successfully complete the full standard physics course. The ninth grade course is more of an introduction to mechanical physics, so it very much goes in parallel with those Algebra I concepts that students are already learning as, as part of their ninth grade curriculum.
Yeah, this goes back to the discussion we've had a lot around, do you start with physics, do you start with biology?
Yep.
You know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the success rate, again, you know, we, we, we have discussed this over the years, I think it's important to, to discuss it again and recognize the success rate with introductory physics for the state in terms of the MCAS is very good. And a, a lot of that has to do with the, the test itself, the way the test is set up, so it's, it's much more math-based of an exam. Biology is, there's, there's a lot of tier-three vocabulary aligned with a biology class. So, when we made that sort of conscious decision to go towards physics first for our freshman cohort, it was also recognizing that we have a very large population of language learners, we have students with disabilities that really do benefit from a hands-on curriculum out of the gate, and, and that's also aligned to their MCAS graduation requirement. So, we're trying to set all of our students up for success.
Yeah, I mean, I, I get it, I guess the question more is then towards some of the kids that are looking for more of a challenge.
Absolutely.
So, is there a way then to build something in where it's not just intro to physics for some of the kids that might be on the other end looking for more challenge to actually meet the honors physics requirement within that ninth grade situation?
It's, 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 it's so important to, to look at what you have for pathways in terms of acceleration and to make sure that students are constantly being challenged in their classes. I think when, when I look at it as principal, I look at it from the end and then backwards, right? And so, I say, do we have an acceptable amount of AP offerings that students are able to take prior to leaving us that they can build their way towards? For the first time this year, we are offering our AP Calculus BC and Multi-Variable Calculus course, which is essentially Calc III. And Jess, you're in that class?
Yeah.
How do you love it?
I think it's really great, I think Ms. Fullas is such an amazing teacher, especially for calculus, she's so good at it. I'm really bad at calculus, but she's very supportive, very passionate, and I think it's definitely a great course if you do feel passionate about calculus and like you have that opportunity, and you also still have the opportunity to take the BC exam, but it's not required, so I think like everyone in my class is taking it, except me, but.
Trust me, Jess, if you're in that class, you're very good at calculus.
Yeah.
So, so what I look at, and I know that when it comes to trying to make sure that the student is challenged, we don't necessarily wanna wait, right? We want our students to be challenged every step of the way, but we're trying to also look at like what, what opportunities do they have before they leave, and are those opportunities appropriate? Are they able to challenge themselves before they leave? I, I presented some data to you last, last time I was here, and we're seeing more AP scholars, for example, 36 AP scholars in 2022. So, for me, that's reassuring as principal that while we do have more of a structured sequence that students are taking, and that structured sequence is very much focused on making sure that they get their graduation requirements out of the way first, and then they spread their wings, and, and, and many of them are being challenged, which is very important, but we're always looking for more ways to do that.
Yeah, and thank you for the discussion, I just.
Absolutely.
You know, I just think that that's something where, and it's probably working in tandem with your guidance counselors on some of the students that may be at a point of, of wanting to push the envelope a little bit more, and that you can do it, it's a matter of having conversations and being open to the communications with you, with the guidance counselors about what opportunities there might be, so.
Absolutely, and, and the middle school students, right? We're going down to do middle school presentations, and we're gonna bring students with us, and they're gonna talk about where they've ended up at Marlboro High School in advanced courses, and, I mean, 50% of our students in the junior and senior year are enrolled in advanced coursework.
Yeah.
It's amazing.
Thank you.
Yeah.
If you build it, they will come.
All right.
Okay, so, so World Languages.
World Languages. So, these, these three courses have not run in five years, and that's why they're being pulled out.
They take AP after four.
Yes, exactly. And, and we're also continuing to work in tandem with the middle school program to make sure that what we're offering throughout high school can be fit within that four-year block, and obviously with this being a five, it's dependent upon a student taking a full year experience in middle school in order to even reach that level, which is why it's, it's been phased out over the years.
Makes sense. Are you not happy?
I'm, I'm looking for World Language to get back heavier, so I'm, I hear why you're doing it.
Sure.
I'll, I'll acknowledge it.
And you know, the thing too is to remember that.
With the middle school.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I, I hear why you're removing it, I just, I, I, my goal is to get back heavier into the middle school and to have that opportunity.
And it's, it's not going away permanently.
Yeah, no, I.
It's be, we're just putting it on the bench, and I think what, what we've been trying to do with the Program of Studies is to have it be a true reflection of what we can offer on an annual basis, and, and I think because enrollment hasn't been streaming into these courses over the last five years, but it does not mean that it won't come back.
Well, and to add, excuse me, to add to that is the fact that in, especially in the five level, you usually only had a handful of the kids.
Yeah.
So, in some cases, they were co-teaching, or not co-teaching, but teaching four and five in the same class to do it, so, yeah, I mean, if you're not offering it next year because there's nobody to take it, it doesn't need to be in there.
Right.
If, if all of a sudden we had.
And they just take AP.
Right.
Yeah.
We made a commitment, if you remember, you know, going back five years ago, that we would honor what the students were interested in taking.
Yeah.
And I think an example of that is, we have 36 students right now in French II, so we may have French III again.
Yeah, it's building back up.
Right, so, so I think it, it fluctuates, but I think it's important to recognize what the students are truly interested in being, and what classes they're being in, and meeting their needs annually with the Program of Studies to make that happen.
I also know, I, no, you're good.
Jess, please.
I can't speak to like the Spanish courses, but I know for like honors line five, like when I was in Latin four, or whenever I was like picking to be in AP Latin, we were given the option of like, do you guys wanna take AP or Latin V, and like the only difference from each course was just if you're required to take the AP exam or not, so it's like the same exact content.
It was a mixed group, you're right.
Yeah, but, and then we all voted to take AP Latin, so.
Plus, there's a GPA difference with AP versus honors.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, moving on.
So, Section 12, Business and Information Technology, we're looking to add a new, what's called Foundations of Financial Literacy. This is a course specifically designed for our English language learners, levels one and two, that would sort of mirror the Principles of Financial Literacy that we're currently offering.
Critical, I think it's great.
Questions on that?
Nope.
More opportunities for financial literacy.
Oh, absolutely.
It's what that course, and it really's.
Yeah, does it sell out all the time? Like, is, or do, are, are we not able to offer enough?
It's interesting, cause we're, we're actually gonna start looking at that baseline really closely again from this, last year to this year, cause the COVID year kinda threw off our numbers a little bit, but yes, it, it is a high-interest course. The trick is how you build it in with the other offerings, that it's also side-by-side with. Ms. Haley, who was here earlier, is, she's the primary teacher of that Principles of Financial Literacy, she also offers accounting classes, and we've maneuvered, as you've seen over the years, the Program of Studies in order to be able to offer both. Principles of Financial Literacy is more of that sort of, that standalone experience over the semester, where you learn the full gamut of financial literacy from, from loan, college loans, personal loans, personal finance, and it's not our typical remembrance with the checking account and debits and credits.
Abacus, for some of us.
That's big.
Right.
But, so we're, we're constantly looking at how we can offer both within, with, within having the staff to offer it, so.
Yeah.
But it is a popular class, and I'm happy about that.
Uh, okay, nothing much in art?
Music?
Music, yeah.
Oh, visual arts, nothing much in 13, so.
Yeah.
Moving on to Section 14, Music. So, we have two courses that are coming out, and you can see with the ninth grade string ensemble, it's because our department is shifting towards that nine-to-12 model again with the string ensemble in order to have higher rates of participation. Topics in Music and Pop Culture, that was one of our new courses that we had to offer online during COVID, during the hybrid year, and because we couldn't have music and audition groups together, we had designed that course specifically for that period of time where we could do something online with students that still promoted our fantastic music program. So, that's why that's recommended for removal.
Still in the wings, should we ever need it again?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Excellent.
Any questions on Section 14, with Music?
Makes sense.
Yep.
Okay, okay, Section 15, Wellness, no changes there. Any questions on Wellness?
Everybody's getting what they need, I know sometimes we have problems, kids can't fit it in, and they have to take it after school, and this and that and the other thing. So, we have enough opt, in the summer, I have heard.
We have, we have, we have offered it in the summer as well.
Yes.
I'll, I'll tell you what is really growing in the Wellness Department is us bringing back the Foods program.
Yes.
Those two, Foods, very, very popular.
Videos on Instagram.
Lots of competition. You gotta know somebody to get in.
Yeah, grilled cheese cook-offs and.
Oh, it's amazing.
Yeah.
It's, have you been able to take that class?
No, but it smells really good.
It does. We go past the first couple of weeks with some burning. Every, the beginning of every semester, there's always some learning curves, but now it smells good. Yeah, so that course has been growing, and there's a lot of interest in taking that.
Good, it's a life skill.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Um, I apologize, I did wanna give one compliment again, the Learn to Jam back in music.
Sure.
Fantastic.
Amazing.
What a way to like get, you know, get kids involved and excited, and then actually, wasn't it a PD day?
Hmm.
Yeah, there was a PD day where it was getting the staff involved in it. Fantastic.
Yep.
Just way of utilizing skills and getting people involved, so, sorry.
Absolutely, yep. Kudos to the department, kudos to Mr. Verdon.
Yeah.
Just recognized this past week as, as, as Teacher of the Week.
Oh, Mr. Verdon was?
Yes, he was, well deserved.
Very nice.
Even while he's dealing with a cold.
Even when he's dealing with a cold, that's right.
Good guy.
That's when he, he's at his best.
Yep.
Moving into our English learner education, just some minor edits to the language in that section of the Program of Studies. Any questions in, in that section?
No, but the, the, one of the ones that you are adding.
Yes, yep, and we'll talk about that separately, cause it's actually not in the one that you originally received, so.
Yeah.
But I'll, I'll add it in at the end.
Yeah.
Section 17, Special Education. So, we removed some co-taught language, and that's not because co-teaching is going away, it's just a modification to the language and the way that the Program of Studies presents.
What do we call it now?
Oh, it's still co-teaching, it's still, still called co-teaching.
I'm always behind the times.
Not yet.
With the vernacular, I gotta keep up here.
Not yet.
Okay.
But the night is young.
Okay.
Oh, please, go ahead, yeah.
So, it's, it's a change in language because some sections have a special education paraprofessional supporting the class versus a special education teacher, so they took, they're changing the language from a co-taught, some will be co-taught by a special ed teacher, but others will be with a paraprofessional, so that's why it's, it's a supported inclusion class.
Got it.
Thank you, sorry.
No, absolutely.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Hennessy.
So, I guess one quick question and would be like, is there an acknowledgement somewhere relative towards the kids that assist with some of the special education programs as far as the Unified Helpers and any kind of credits that they receive? I mean, cause I think that's important, that's one of the things that, you know, we've really pushed hard on providing those opportunities and building those relationships, so would that.
I can, I can absolutely double-check on that, I'm, I'm almost positive that they are receiving credits for being in the.
I think they are, but I almost think that it might be good to actually have an acknowledgement within the Program of Studies to actually help, you know, to push forward, that that is something that you can get credit for, for, you know, doing this as part of what, what you're helping.
Absolutely, absolutely. Any other questions or comments for Special Education section? Okay, Library Media Center, number 18, no changes. Any questions?
Except they got a nice grant tonight.
They got a wonderful grant tonight.
Get some.
And Mrs. V has been working very hard to build that collection.
Yeah.
For all of our students, so it's wonderful.
It's great.
And then last, Section 19, Virtual High School, we're still continuing to offer VHS and help students supplement what they're already taking at MHS with those additional online offerings.
Do you...
Sorry, relative to Virtual High School, is this something that kids can begin some of the courses and have it extend into the summer to be able to finish certain coursework to help them? Like I know that some things are only offered in that area. I mean, is it something that you can begin, say, at the end of the spring term, because you wanted to like make sure that you had, I don't know, some prerequisite, so you can do something further the next year?
VHS is actually semesterized nationally.
Okay.
And that's because they do have live instructors that are assigned to each of the classes. So there is a, there is a semester beginning fall, and then also at the beginning of the spring.
Okay.
Yeah. Some of the things that we could explore, though, and with our early college partnership especially, we could always look at what sort of asynchronous online work could be brought in for students that are looking to challenge themselves. I think we've done a really great job trying to be open to any of those opportunities when they do present themselves.
Yeah.
But specifically for VHS, it's very structured, and it begins and ends on a set schedule.
Okay, thank you.
Are, are they synchronously taught? I mean, when these assigned teachers are teaching it, are they only teaching kids online, or are they teaching in a classroom and our kids are watching that?
It's only online, it's only online, and it is, it is asynchronous, but it is set over the course of a scheduled semester, so.
Yeah, as if you took an online class in the college.
Yes, exactly. Yep, yep.
Got it. Any questions over here? No? Okay, so moving on to your addendum.
Thank you, and thank you for entertaining that. We, we are bringing a few of those things together, and that's why I kind of included it separately for your consideration. So the first two courses we'll look at are the additions to our EL Program of Studies, the Hetero, the Heritage Portuguese and the Heritage Spanish courses. And so this idea is still being developed, but we are looking at staffing and seeing if we can bring one or both of those options online for our English learners going into next school year.
Just one typo in your...
Oh, sure.
Heritage Spanish, you left Portuguese in there.
Oh, okay. Yes, nope, thank you, thank you, thank you.
No problem.
Oh, I see it, yep.
The cut and paste didn't work.
Actually, I wanna comment on this too, because I think we have many students who speak their native language, but if they had to take a test on it, they couldn't test.
Sure.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, well, and we know a lot of these kids coming from Central America have been underschooled, so they're illiterate in Spanish.
But even so, even if they've been here since day one and they're speaking Spanish in their home.
Yeah, they're fluent.
Right, they're fluent, but they're not...
But they're not, they're not literate.
Literate, I guess maybe, I don't know if saying it's literate, because they can't write it, or they probably could read it, but...
Maybe can't?
Or maybe not, right.
Increasing, increasing a student's literacy in their native language is, is closely aligned with raising in academic achievement. There's a, there's a strong relationship there that's been observed in multiple case studies. And I think that that's also a wonderful way for us to honor and recognize the diversity and the heritage of our students.
Hundred percent.
I mean, and we, I think, sometimes make an assumption that just because they speak a second language, that they're literate in it, and...
Right. But they're still kids, so.
Right.
I mean, we still teach English, even though our kids are...
Right.
It's just an expansion.
Yep.
Excellent. And another work-based learning program?
Yes, yes. I wanna circle back to, to one of the programs...
Yeah, that you were dropping, right.
Yeah, and I apologize for that, but let's talk about the addendum first, since that's already in front of you. So I wanna give a shout-out to the city, the mayor's office, and ME DC, Meredith Harris, Harris, who helped us come, partner with Technium. And we talked earlier today, it's okay for me to mention the company at this point.
Okay.
So Technium is currently working with us to build a program that we see as being very similar to the EMT program that we're currently offering, where in the field, Technium is an IT solutions company located here in Marlboro. They are very enthusiastic about helping to build a pipeline for that workforce in that skill area. And, and so when we met and we discussed the potential for this, and Superintendent Murphy joined me for that meeting, it was very positive. And we're looking at something that might be, like look a little different than the Patriot Ambulance Partnership, because there might be some hybrid that's going on, where some of the, at some points, the students may be working onsite at Marlboro High School, and then also experiencing things onsite at Technium. We're talking right now about how to best staff that program to support the student experience, but it is coming together. It is something that we would love to pilot in the fall with just a few students, maybe two or three students to start, sort of like what we did with Patriot.
Patriot.
Start it small and then, and then grow it. But it is shaping out to be a wonderful opportunity in an area of growing, a growing labor area. So if we can get our students those skills, that's a, that's a huge win for us.
Huge, and you know, the whole, you know, concept that if we give them the skills that they need to get a job, they can go to the workforce when they leave us, and those companies will send them to college when they need more.
Absolutely, absolutely. It's an investment that's worth making, and we've talked about this in the past with how we design our Program of Studies and what we're offering, and we want a lot of those experiences to lead to skills-based learning that can then lead to a student pursuing more opportunity when they graduate from high school, and potentially coming back and living and working in Marlboro and making the community stronger, right?
Yep, that's great. Nice to partner with ME DC and the city, too.
Absolutely, hundred percent.
So yeah, so you're dropping the CNA-type program.
Yeah, the personal...
I can't find it now, though. Where did you...
Assistant, person, so Personal Care Assistant program that we had forged with the branches.
Yeah.
And, and what has happened throughout COVID, since the launch of that potential program, they've undergone a change in leadership, a change in management. And when the new management and leadership team came on board, this was not something that was on their radar from the previous leadership team. So we're, we're just putting it aside for now. We do have intentions of continuing to pursue career-based learning, especially in healthcare.
Yeah.
And, and that was, I think, a great concept with the PCA, Personal Care Assistant, it's called.
Yeah.
But we do need to help work with the new leadership team to get them on board with how they're gonna help train and support our students, so that's, that still needs to be worked out.
Have we had any conversations with the reservoir across the street?
No, we have not, but I can absolutely bring that back to Amanda Chenier tomorrow.
They're a nursing home versus assisted living, but...
Yep.
Similar skill sets.
No, absolutely, and it's close.
It's right across the street.
Yeah.
I went through the first eight sections really quick. Are there any questions regarding any of those initial sections that had very few, if any, changes?
Oh, that's where it was, right. Any questions? No, I think we're good.
So you want a motion?
Please.
Sure.
Motion for approval of a Program of Studies with the changes as discussed.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed.
Thank you.
Send it to print.
Thank you. Well, we gotta fix the typos first.
Yeah, fix the typos first.
Thank you.
You are welcome. Uh, request to deem certain curriculum materials obsolete, that is you.
That is me. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. As you know, we, we frequently update curriculum materials, and as we bring in new curriculum, we deem others obsolete. What we're hoping to do today is to deem obsolete certain DRA kits and Journeys materials, and we're hoping to either gift these to Marlboro students, donate them, or simply dispose of them. There is a memo behind my request here from Mr. Samborn, who has worked with all of the elementary principals to identify and inventory the materials that we're hoping to deem obsolete tonight.
I hope we don't just like toss them out.
Mrs. Recycling over here.
Well, no, I mean, there's gotta be somebody out there that might want them, but, I mean, you got, you've got people that take all that furniture.
Yes, we did.
You can, I'm sure there's somebody out there that doesn't have the resources that we have that could use them. But I like the idea of sending it home with kids if, if, you know, they want them and...
That was a big thing that hit me. I would love to see that if we, you know, can, try and get them to kids, but also to some of the apartment complexes where we have an influx of a lot of the ELA, like if they have any common space or something like that, I would love it if, if we could donate some to those areas. And we might know of a community service group that might be up for trying to help on how to distribute some of those.
Great.
Considering I'm an education chair for that group, too.
Whatever we can utilize in a positive way, we'll absolutely do that. We already reached out to some of our vendors to see if they had a method in which we could utilize this. Unfortunately, they didn't, so we'll have to do something local.
Yeah.
But we'll look for every way that we can use them in a positive way.
Great, awesome.
Motion to approve the, to deem certain curriculum materials obsolete.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Posed, carries. Thank you very much. Operating budget transfers.
Thank you. I have a few transfers in the FY '23 budget for the committee's consideration tonight. Just wanna say, there are three transfers tonight that has to do with the substitute lines, and one may say, there's three months left in the school year, what's going on? So I just wanted to address that really quickly. There are two things that impacted this. One of them is that you may remember last year, every month I was bringing forward a lot of transfers due to long-term substitutes. We haven't done as many this year. The reason why is a lot of the long-term substitutes that were being charged to the lines where they were subbing, so for example, long-term substitute in English would be charged to that line. I changed that practice this year, I'm charging them to the substitute lines for that school, so that I could avoid being in front of you every month. In addition to that, we are still reeling a bit from COVID, as well as a shortage in staff, causing for additional needs for substitutes. We don't have a budget issue, what we have is circumstantial. So at this point, I wouldn't recommend doing any changes to those lines. Things will settle down. It's a little premature to change anything on those lines, but I just wanted to recognize that that's happening. So, at the Good Now School, I'm requesting a transfer of $30,000 from the paraprofessional line to the teacher substitute line. At the Jarrah School, I'm also requesting a transfer of $30,000 from the Adjustment Counselor line to the teacher substitute line. At Wickham, I'm requesting a transfer of $6,000 from the Behavior Tech line to the RPAC, 12-month clerk line, that is the .5 position that the committee approved a couple of millions ago. At Marlboro High, I'm requesting a transfer of $40,000 from the ELA teacher line to the teacher substitute line. District-wide, requesting a transfer of $4,210 from the data analyst line towards the student transportation and the cell phone lines. And special education, I am requesting a transfer of $15,000 from the Agri District Transportation line to offset overages in the team chair line, that's due to coverage over at the Kane School, as well as the district-wide tutor line. Happy to answer any other questions.
Motion to approve the transfers.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any questions, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Close, carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, substitute pay rates. Mrs. Murphy, you taking that one?
Um, I think it's Mrs. Brown.
Mrs. Brown gonna come talk to us?
Who?
You stayed out all night, you might as well talk.
I do a lot of talking all day.
You have yours?
So I do, yeah. So I'm presented, um, do you wanna start?
No, go ahead.
Um, so you have in your packet our rates, our current rates for substitutes, and recommendation for a proposed increase to the rates. Happy to take any questions or...
Yes, ma'am. Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Mrs. Matthews.
Um, I get, I thank you for providing us with the information, and I know, obviously, you gave us the local, I understand about raising the rate, but looking at our closest communities, we're already above them, so why are we not attracting substitutes?
Part of it is the, I think is the market is part of the issue. Our daily sub-rate, in my mind, the recommendations that are here are more for the impact of next year, or at the end of this school year. Going into next year, it will be a whole other year before we revisit them again. So I was trying to get ahead of the market for the next school year. My main concern in bringing this forth to you was the long-term substitute teacher rate, where we were having a lot of difficulties. Too bad Mr. Riley just left, because he could attest to the fact that we've had a number of long-term substitutes that we've tried to secure to cover positions. We haven't been able to, because they've been able to earn more in other districts. So that's been our biggest challenge.
Thoughts, questions, entertain a motion?
So, in, looking at the comparison of the long-term substitutes, many of them are much, much higher...
Yes.
...than we are.
Yep.
Um, and I guess it looks like they're probably paying them based on a per diem of a teacher.
Yeah, so our...
The day rate, right? Is it, we're going back to the day rate again?
Yeah, so our Bachelor's Step A, which is our first step in the Bachelor's, is $294.42 as a daily rate. If we were to hire somebody for the full year who had a Bachelor's degree, that is what they would receive. I didn't expect the school committee would want to see, and this is maybe my own assumption, an increase going from 180 for the long-term sub-rate to a lot more than a $20 a day increase. That was my own assumption, but if we wanted to match what the surrounding areas are doing, they're at 260, 270.
I guess my concern is, is that we've budgeted for a teacher, right? In the, in, in, in that role. That teacher could be anywhere from $60,000 to $90,000. The $290 day rate is at the low end of the scale, and will it bring in more opportunities for us to get them?
Yeah, that's a good point. We have budgeted for a teacher, and in a lot of cases, we're paying a teacher, because a lot of our long-term subs, I don't know if anybody's noticed, but we have a bit of a baby boom going on, and they are getting their regular pay at sick days, and on top of that, we have to pay...
Right.
...a long-term substitute to cover it. So it's not as... So it's not as if the, the teacher salary has gone away. And we have that savings.
But if they take longer than their.
If they do go into child rearing, then yes, that would be unpaid time, correct? You're absolutely right.
Well, and that's why I'm wondering if, if, if we look at past the 90 days, or maybe look at it as the family leave time, or the maternity leave, parental leave. At that point, if they're here longer than, where we're not paying two people, but bumping it up to that person to say, you know, now, now will you stay for the remainder and we put you at. I mean, I don't know what anybody else's opinion is.
You know, at this point, it seems like we have, you know, it's broken. The system that we have now is broken. We can't get people to come here for whatever reason. Most likely, it's because they can get paid more someplace else. If we don't give them what they demand, they're not going to come.
Correct.
I, I like that idea. I mean, yeah, it's hard if the person is doing a long-term sub-job to cover for a teacher that's just out for some extended period of time. It's not like, like in the BTs or in the pair lines that you're filling a slot that there's no full-time person in. That's a different situation, because that's what we budgeted for. But do you think that that would make a difference, particularly at the 91 to 179?
I do, so when we have the paid time during Family Medical Leave Act for, say, like, just an example of birth of a child, so the first eight weeks, they're using their sick time. So after that first two-month period of time, after the 60 calendar day period of time, then we're really looking at, that would be the time that the teacher is using some unpaid time for the remainder of their FMLA, and then potentially going to child rearing if they choose to do that as a benefit in the MEA contract. So we could increase it at, after 60 days, if you're looking at a equal trade-off there. And if you look at the other districts, they really are in the 168 to 170 range, pretty much, for those longer-term subpositions. So that would be a, quite an increase in the long-term substitute after 60 calendar days.
You've got Algonquin at 285, Neshova at 298.
You're looking at Hudson, which is right next door, right?
Yeah, what's Hudson?
North Borough, South Borough, right next door.
With about 271.
Sudbury, Sudbury, I think, is underneath ours, underneath that there rate. So if you want to make a.
Yeah, see, so they go, Sudbury goes to 250 after the eight weeks.
Yes.
That's just a teacher sub, that's the only number we have. Or, no, yeah, 280, sorry. Yep, yep.
Yep. Did you have a, a rate that you wanted to recommend to consider?
What does that do to the budget? Mr. Diaz is, like, melting over there.
I'm obviously in support of getting people in here so that kids can get instruction. If you're asking for my opinion from a budgetary standpoint, my personal preference would be to have an impact after the 90 days, so 91 to 179, because then we can have a clear break. Not to go retroactive after that point. Again, I'm speaking from the finance standpoint. And I am partial to a fixed cost that is not connected to a salary tables that was negotiated with another union.
It's more predictable.
Yes.
Yeah, for sure.
What you're saying is, when we get to the point where we're not paying the original salary because they've gone beyond that, whatever, then we can go ahead and bump that up.
Well, I'm saying, so for the.
Because that would be 60 days.
Right, from 30 to 90 days.
I like the 30 to 90 still, though, because there's still that.
Yeah.
What Patty is recommending.
There's that 30 days of wiggle room in the middle.
Right. And then it's likely that after 91 days, we're no longer covering the other budgeted salary. So if it, that gets bumped up to a competitive rate of, say, 275 fixed rate.
Yeah, I was just using an example. Since so many of them are tied to the, the chart, but it doesn't need to be tied to the chart.
Well, and a good thing I have, have to say is, you know, for our students, the consistency, once we start talking about a 91 to 179, I mean, it's, it's massively important. So, I mean, I, I kind of like it as we, we want to offer a little bit more so that we actually have the consistency of, of a long-term teacher that's there for those students. You know, it's like a little bone to, like, keep them involved.
So I'll make a motion to accept the changes, the proposed changes on here, with the exception of going to 275 on the long-term 91-day plus.
He just had heart palpitations.
You can feel them over here?
That's my motion. And Patty, there's one little typo, you forgot the per hour on the custodial.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody want to second my motion?
Yes, of course, second. Do you have anything to add to this thought?
No. I think our priority is to get highly qualified staff in the classroom. So I think this will help tremendously, so we really appreciate it.
Whatever we can do.
And you, and by you, I mean you, will be able to figure this out for us, right? Yeah. Any other, any further? Yes.
Scenario, sorry, scenario is you, you've got a, need a long-term sub, person is in there, they get the lower, whatever the other rate is, and in 91 days, we, it goes up to the proposed, whatever, 275. At the end of the year, or whatever the situation is, they, we may want to try to get them to become regular staff, I would imagine.
That's a typical pipeline for us, yes.
Yeah.
So does that new number, is that commensurate with salary on a teacher? This is a day rate, but if you do the, do the math out.
Right, so I think it was.
You'll be like, no, I'm making more money as a long-term sub.
No, that would be below bachelor step one.
Yeah, we are below. Bachelor step one was 294.
Yeah, so we're 20 dollars below that.
I know, I'm just asking.
Good question.
Yeah. Okay, yep, we have, ready to vote? All in favor? Opposed? Carries? There you go.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Doug's over there going.
What have we done?
Yeah, Tom's going, what did he just do?
Okay, school choice.
No.
Who wants to be the first one to make the motion no?
I will be the first one to make the motion.
So we are required to, to, prior to June 1st, for the school committee must vote as to whether or not the district will accept school choice students in the upcoming 2023, 24 school year. We do not currently accept school, students through school choice. And we are asking for you to, once again, vote. And saying it out loud, we do not have space to accept school choice students, so hoping for another no vote. Thank you.
Okay, Jim?
I will be, do not accept school choice.
Motion made and seconded to decline to enter the school choice program. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Someday we aspire, but. Okay, vote on the budget.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. On February 14th, Superintendent Mary Murphy submitted a budget of $71,996,080 to the, to the school committee. This is a 3.62% increase over the current FY '23 budget. We hosted a budget workshop on March 1st to go through the budget proposal, and a public hearing was hosted earlier this evening. So right now, I would love for the school committee to vote to approve the FY '24 budget and make it your budget, so that I can send it to City Council.
I will make a motion to approve the fiscal year '24 proposed budget of $71,996,080.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed?
Thank you.
We have a budget. Acceptance of donations and gifts. We have Kathy Taylor, MHS Art Department, $500.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve with gratitude. Motion made and seconded to approve with gratitude. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Carries. Special Olympics, MHS Unified Programs, $500.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Carries. Mass Desi, FY '23, FC 335, Safe and Supportive Schools, for MPS, $10,000.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Carries. Mass Desi, FY '23 Gleam Grant, for MPS, $55,000.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Carries. Mass Desi, FC 344, Homeless Emergency Support Grant, MPS, $13,000.
Motion to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Carries. So the, the no, the scholarship, that'll be on the next. We just voted to get it, we didn't get the money, so we don't have to do it now. Okay, thank you. School committee subcommittees, any reports? Seeing none. Members forum. Mrs. Hennessy.
I just wanted to congratulate the Wickham Middle School students on their production of Freaky Friday and the high school students on their production of Matilda.
Very fun.
Great stuff. Love seeing it.
Just a shout out to the high school music department going on their MICA competition on Friday. I'm sure they'll do well.
Very nice, very nice. Mrs. Matthews?
I have reviewed the warrant and will sign it.
Excellent, thank you. Anyone else? Jess, anything for you to add? Thank you for helping with Dr. Riley's.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn at 9:15. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.